Court will come to order. It is Monday, July the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, nine o'clock in the morning, and the Kerr County Commissioners' Court is now in session. If you would, please rise for the prayer and pledge. Prayer will be led by Commissioner Jones and the pledge by Commissioner Pace.
Yeah, if y'all would join me for prayer. Heavenly Father, this is such a somber time that we're coming before you again. Father, our needs are still great in what we can do. But Father, we know that there's so many people out there that are just hurting so bad, and so we call for you to please just wrap your loving arms around them. Father, at this point, we know what we're looking for is the losses are going to suffer. So Father, be with them. Give them the compassion, the love, the friends that they need to surround them. Father, we know whenever this flood hit, heaven's gates were just open wide. That's a sad thing to have to stand up here and say. But Father, we have assurance from you that that's what took place. So Father, we have that assurance, and that gives us the strength we need to go forward to try to do the task that we have ahead of us. So give us the guidance, the wisdom, the direction. Father, we thank you for all the folks that are out there on the field that are working so hard and sacrificing so much to serve those in need right now. Our volunteer fire departments, our first responders, Father, the list goes on and on and on. The state, the government, they've all come together. So with this force that you've pulled together, Father, we call on you to meet those needs. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I've probably already heard the ooh-bah on my phone. It's code red when I get those. But if you would, turn your phones to silent or off. I've turned mine to silent not to interrupt this proceeding, and I'll try to monitor it. This is not a press conference today. This is a business meeting, and we've got business that we have to do in the midst of this disaster response. So I ask everyone to please be patient with us. And as we get into the public input, please observe your time limits so that we can get through all of this, but we need to do it. Okay. So the first part of the business is public input, and I've got a few here. First one is Ann Carr.
Good morning. Can you hear me? No, is it all?
Just speak up a little bit.
Does it matter? Okay.
Pull the mic closer to you.
Okay.
The microphone doesn't help us up here. That's just for the YouTube.
Okay. All right. First of all, I want to say thank you. I'm so proud to be a part of the member of this community. I'm amazed at what's going on, and I'm very grateful to be a resident of Ingram. And the reason that I'm here today is we live on Lake Ingram. We live at the ravine. My sister and I have been concerned regarding Lake Ingram and what we saw happen during the flood. From about three in the morning, we were alerted. We started, we went out, we started seeing the lake rise, and as we did, we saw all kinds of things float by us: propane tanks, kitchen appliances, you name it. And that concern led us to start visiting with people up the road. About three hundred yards down the road, we visited with the family the day of the flood. They told us about their brand-new zero-turn motor that was swept away, a three-quarter ton green truck that was swept away. We don't know where it is. We don't know where our building material is, our fence, our cattle panel, our two docks that have sharp nails. We ski on that lake. I've taught numerous kids to ski on that lake. The depth range on my boat is thirteen to fifteen feet at its deepest. And about three or four days ago, my sister got in touch with Ted Cruz's office in Austin, and they recommended that we be here just to voice our concerns. That's why we're here, not to complain, if anything, just to say thank you. Thank you to the commissioners. Thank you for the police department. Thank you for all the first responders. We have people that are staying in our house right now and have been that are here. There are firefighters. There are people that are out there looking for bodies. So we are here to say thank you, but also to voice our concern about the lake. And if there's a way that we can find the resources to drain that lake, it hasn't been drained in probably twenty years. And Abbott said that he would do anything in his power to make sure that these bodies are recovered, and I hope that we can find the money and the ability to drain that lake. So thank you again.
Thank you.
And you might talk to me during the break or something.
John Rivenberg.
I'm John Rivenberg. I spend a lot of time working. Good morning. Those of you who don't know me, I'm an entrepreneur in this area. I'm born and raised in this area. I've been in Texas for multiple generations. I have a business and a home in Precinct One, and I have a business that operate in Precinct Four, fifteen fifty-one, Highway thirty-nine. One, I'd like to thank everybody that's working. So from a statement standpoint, I'd love to thank everybody that's been working very diligently to keep us safe and keep us protected and keep us moving with what we're doing. I more have questions, and I'm sure you'll answer some of those questions, but I just wanted them to be in record. A couple of things of note: volunteers are fantastic. My question is, is if a plan, and if I'm sure it is, if I ask loaded questions, I know it's being recorded. My question is, if there's a plan, I'd love to know what the plan is for Wes Kerr as it relates to organization of people management, one, and then material management, two. Next, I would love to have the ability to understand where businesses can look for assistance. I know this is probably an early time to be asking that, but I didn't want to wait another, until another meeting came around to ask the question, so that way it could be thoughtful and be thought about. Ourselves, we lost several million dollars in this disaster, as well as everybody else. I've been on an excavator since Friday evening when we could get in, working with first responders, hunt, volunteer fire department, to move debris and work with folks. Over the weekend, my team and I were able to move down into the river bottom to help Mr. Jefferson and a few other people. So those are mostly my concerns. And third, if there is at some point a fire plan, I would love to recommend just the work that I've done before I was in the wine business. We did some management. I would love to caution allowing reckless abandonment of burning. So if you guys could not smoke out the valley, that would be great. So those are just kind of my comments, my initial concerns, and my thoughts. My wife works for the EOC. Kelly Hagmeyer's been directly involved with everything since day one, so I have a, you know, a pretty good insight in what's happening and how it's going. And again, thank you very much for what you're doing, and I just want to know that we're working on an active plan to keep the people that live out there safe and protected from... I got a report last night. My neighbor said that there was a flashlight going through our property, so looters and that kind of thing. I would just, as somebody who has family out there and lives out, essentially, when you work, when you farm, you live out there, right? So I just want to make sure we've got good plans in place for those actions: fire, debris, and protection from, you know, looters and people being there that don't belong there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Just to remind the public, this is input. We don't get to respond. So their answers to all those questions, and if you go to our website, you'll find them. They're there. Okay. Next one is Christine Pugh.
Good morning. This is just a statement of appreciation. I'd like to thank the first responders, the brave men and women who jumped into action in response to the tragic floods here in Kerr County on the early morning of July fourth and fifth, two thousand twenty-five. I'd also like to recognize the immense amount of support to all of the volunteers we received from all over the state, all over Texas, from all over the county and other states. So Sheriff Leitha in EMS, all county, all county fire departments who knocked on doors of our citizens to help them evacuate their residences, saved lives, and showed leadership during a time of crisis. Kerr County in Texas is resilient and strong and will face months, if not years, of recovery. After assisting many residents of Kerr County, I believe our community will recover strong and in expedient manner. Our gratitude to the many agencies, volunteers, first responders, and cleanup crews, teams, is unconditional. This tragic event has proven the greatness of humanity. Please pray for the families who were affected. Thank you for blessing Kerr County with kind hearts and love of mankind.
Okay, we'll move on from public input to Commissioner's comments. And I would ask us, to try to keep it brief. We've got business to do today.
Yeah, I'm going to keep it very brief. I know y'all need a lot of answers, and we can't give you all those answers from up here. Like the judge alluded to, the websites, Facebook, we're putting all updates out there that we can. I will tell you, there's a, I've been working for days on the debris plan, and so that's one of the places our state partners have been really phenomenal, and there is a good plan, but we're trying to work, move towards implementation of it. I'd ask that all the volunteers get registered, please, because we need to know who's out there and who's on the river. That's most important. And again, all of that's available online. Each one, everybody up here's had a different role in this disaster, and no one of them's more important than the other. And so my hat's off to all my brothers up here. They've worked hard, countless hours, but we don't care. We're here to do what we're supposed to do. And so thank y'all. We ask for patience in this, not to sit back and not get answered, but patience, because we need it right now, because we're in the midst of still the aftermath of the storm that's to come, too. And so we're trying to prepare for that. So I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Well, I hear the need to be brief. I'll try, but there's too many things that need to be said.
I'll cut you off.
Go ahead.
We've got to get this done.
Yeah, okay. Just to close the loop on, I mentioned in the last court, back before all this stuff happened, that there would be a meeting in Center Point about incorporation. We had a great discussion, about twenty-five people in attendance, and after discussing pros and cons of incorporating, a show of hands indicated that only one person remained interested in incorporating. So enough of that. My heartfelt condolences and prayers go out to all who were lost in the flood and for their families, who've never seen anything like this, but I am immensely proud of the Center Point Volunteer Fire Department in particular. Of course, I'm a member, so I'm biased. Members of that swift water response team were called out to Ingram about three a.m. Everyone else received a notice of flooding, and we were called to the station at five a.m. All of our people and trucks were sent out by six a.m. to alert the public of the impending flood. And knowing that it was coming, we went door to door and got people out. And as a result, no one in our area was lost, and that's just a gift from God. After that, you know, our station had seven foot of water in it. We were on traffic control to keep people from entering any low-water areas, covered streets like Highway four-eighty, China Street, Skyline Drive. And later that afternoon, on the fourth, a woman was rescued, who came all the way down through debris and heavy currents and managed to land in a tree, a Cypress tree, right across from our station. And we eventually got to her, and a rescue was performed. It wasn't easy, because the water was still raging, and it took us a while to line up a second boat, so we probably need to consider another swift water response. But there's probably a lot of other things we need to add to that list, too, and I'm sure we'll talk about it. And search and rescue operations began early Saturday morning, continued each day until yesterday, when the search and rescue was suspended due to the heavy rain and predicted flooding. We did see the river rise by seven to eight feet, as was predicted. But that was a gift, again, from God to give us all some rest and a chance to regroup and reassess. After the first couple of days of search and rescue, where Commissioner Holt also joined us, I was focused, my efforts now, on the community. And so we've been going out door to door, trying to, with a team of volunteers, trying to knock and assess the damage, and then pair people who have had a lot of damage with the resources that are available, and there's tremendous resources. You know, at the station, that same night, on the fourth, once the water receded, we were left with four to six inches of mud in the station, and it was quite a clean-out effort till about midnight, just so we could park trucks in. That doesn't deal with any of the other damage there, but the outpouring of assistance has just been outstanding. That team I mentioned that went out, knocked on doors to assess damage, do welfare checks, we've identified about twenty-five homes that had heavy damage, and we've already connected them with volunteers who are helping to resolve their issues. Several donated RV trailers were made available for residents who lost their home. And with support from the Center Point ISD and the Center Point VFD, we were able to set up a food, water, and cleaning supplies distribution center at the school's gymnasium on China Street, and they've just done a wonderful job. By Sunday the sixth, we had over fifteen hundred volunteers working out in the flood plain, conducting search and rescue. We didn't turn people away. I mean, a little bit of chaos, but it was amazing how organized it actually was. So despite this tragedy of this event, we have seen the best of humanity. We truly see God's hand at work. There are too many people and agencies to name who have all worked tirelessly in our, to help us in our time of need. The coordination and resources made available have been tremendous. There were too many volunteers to name and acknowledge, but I do want to personally thank Harry Holt, a private citizen, not a member of our fire department, but he has been the focal point of the Center Point response. We couldn't have done what we've done without him. And I also want to thank Chief Wes Gordon for his work at the EOC and helping to fill the needs of all the VFDs. And then lastly, I want to just thank the community support team in Center Point, and namely Christie Richards, Carla Perry, Amanda Whitworth, Brittany Butler, Brittany Cranford, and Robbie Pettifalz. They've all been wonderful and made huge contributions. And then lastly, I'm just going to comment, because it won't come up later, that it's sad to see the evil that's out there as well, in the midst of all this beauty. You know, I've been getting death threats. Can you imagine? And people cursing us for decisions that we never had a chance to make, and they're just playing a blame game. So, you know, Joe Biden didn't give us ten million dollars for a flood warning system. Now, that's just false information. We did get ten million in ARPA funds, okay, and we used it for a radio system to help with emergency response. So anyway, I guess that's all I say, but I'll stop there.
Thank you. This is not a press conference.
No, but...
Precinct Three.
I want my say.
God put us here for a reason. I found out what it was this week. Burn ban remains in effect. Please stay off the river for recreational boating. Last week, rain, rescue, and recovery. I was there and assisted in that one live rescue. I recovered a body as a volunteer and did lots of searches and stayed with our fire department mostly. So we switched roles between volunteers and commissioner, and I think we're aware. I always tell what I did last week, so I won't stop with that. I'm proud of Texas and the volunteers. You see what true grit looks like. It's out there in the faces and the arms and the hands of all those people helping. It's pretty impressive. We did do an NBC interview arranged by the JIC. I don't know if they'll broadcast it, but it does have Riddell, Holt, and Rice on it, kind of telling the truth. I did meet the President and the First Lady, but more importantly, those other first responders that did some miracle work out there, just impressive people. If you're going to ask me what we need in the future, I always like to kind of seed things for our court. That's what I do. Self-service out west, sirens along the cities, and we need to probably think about more diversion dams, like the one that we voted on previously for grant money down on Cypress Creek in Guadalupe. We need to maybe have engineering look at that and consider more of those upriver. And then the water model does show thirty-six feet of water in what we saw and what I dealt with on the morning at five o'clock in Center Point, and that was moving at one-point-five million gallons per second. So those are the facts that the model show. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Again, I couldn't be more proud of all the first responders, both local, state, and everything. My four VFDs that I represent, hats off to them. They have been outstanding. They're there, you know. They've lost equipment. Some of them lost everything they had, but they showed up. They showed up. I told Commissioner Holt earlier, you know, in times like this, you know, there's people that run away from a fight, and there's those that run to it. We've got a lot more running to it and answering the bell. The churches, oh, wow. I wouldn't even begin to start naming them, because I'd leave somebody out. They have stepped up in whatever role they needed to be, whether it's housing people, taking in donations, what have you. They're there, every one of them. It's amazing from day one. Food vendors, they've come from everywhere to feed us, the first responders, be on the spot. I've had so many call me and say, where can I go? And I said, I don't know where you could go. I mean, everybody had something. Hot meals, not just sandwiches and stuff. It's been amazing, and they want to break, more want to come in, but I don't know where I would send them that they, that isn't covered right now. A biggie, false rumors. I spend, every day, I'm stomping out false rumors, and please check. Call us, check the websites, Facebook, whatever. And I've been checking social media. That's where I find a lot of them, and fortunately, I can get to the source and stop it out, stomp them out pretty quickly. You know, if it sounds too foolish to be true, it probably is. Follow Kerr County Facebook page, the website, mine. I put everything on mine, Don Harris, Kerr County Commissioner. Tom and I have been working on debris with Tedom all week long. I mean, we started, the first meeting was probably last Sunday, Sunday before last time, I think, and finally got it, got it going our way. I think last Monday, Tom and I just took a huge sigh of relief when they said the state's taken over on the debris deal. Wow, that was a huge concern. Otherwise, it would have been dumped on us taxpayers. So that's huge. And that's about it. I want to keep it short.
Good. Let's move on to the consideration agenda. One point one is to consider discussion, take appropriate action following an update on the status of recovery efforts from the July fourth flooding. We've been hearing the status. One thing that I, and Sheriff, is there anything you'd like to report?
Real briefly...
I thought there was.
As y'all heard several times, search continues. Unfortunately, we lost about half, three-quarter of a day yesterday to the river going up. But like I said, like y'all said, I've been assured by the governor and the president, you know, we will... I've been assured by the governor and the president, you know, we will have the resources to get the job done. You know, how long is it going to take? You know, who knows? You know, I think we'll still go strong for another month or two, up to maybe six months winding down as, as, as we move on. But like I said, we continue to have the resorts, resources and assets we need, and we'll keep looking and moving forward.
Judge.
For those of you that haven't driven by the Hill Country Health Center, it is buzzing. I don't know how many people we have that the state has deployed. I know that there are.
2,200.
Huh?
2,200 people.
2,200. And they are busy. And yes, the state has stepped up, and they're going to pay the lion's share of this debris removal. I can tell you that one of the most unique things about that building over there right now is with all these various state agencies and federal agencies, we've got the FBI, we've got the DEA, we've got the Border Patrol. And the collaboration and cooperation is truly inspiring. I can tell you from everything that I've seen over there, and I've been in all those rooms, I've sat at most of those tables, as I, as I mingle around there at the Emergency Operations Center, there is not a single ego in that room, in all those rooms. They are there to serve. It is not about them. The egos, eh, some of them out here in the public, we have to deal with a little, a little bit of that. But in that room, I'm telling you, those people have rolled up their sleeves, gone to work. What I say about emergency management, it's a process, and you do it one step at a time. And you work through it one step at a time. And that's what, in different roles, that's what every person on this court has done. Saturday morning, Mr. Holt and I were out accepting another donation from USAA, another million dollars. I've got phone calls I haven't been able to return with people trying to donate money to help us. We are loved and cared for here. Know that. Know that these people have our backs, and we're going to get through this. And it's going to be one process at a time. We'll, we'll get to the lake when we get to the lake. And, and the first phase of any type of emergency response is search and rescue. And we have been up to our eyeballs in search and rescue. This is what, day 10?
Day 11, sir.
Day 11? I'm losing track. They all bled together. And search and rescue remains our, our top priority. But, and that's what we were doing yesterday. We've moved on to also include recovery. And that's where we had the people out in the, the river basin, doing a lot of work. We're trying to get a handle on things. So just be patient with it as, as we go forward. I don't know of any particular action we can take, other than the items we have on the agenda.
One more point, though, that needs to be made, and, and because I think the more y'all are informed, the better. We just can only deal with facts. And there is a plan in place right now to, to accomplish draining the lakes.
That's what I wanted to relate.
Yeah, we can't go any further with that, other than tell you that's being looked at right now.
And know that that is going to be an enormous undertaking because of the endangered species issues that we have. Huh?
The mussels.
The mussels.
Right.
Hopefully, they went downstream.
I think they got washed downstream.
They're gone, all the oil.
I wouldn't assume that.
I think, I think a lot of them will be stacked up right against that dam.
Yeah, you may be right. Yeah.
I was hoping the Louis pads would be gone.
But there is a plan working right now.
When the water recedes, they pop right back up.
Y'all are doing a great job.
Do we have any action that we need to take on the, just reporting the status of where we are with the disaster response?
Judge, just one thing for consideration. I know this is going to go on, and we probably need to think about scaling the EOC down to something long-term, where we have butts and seats.
That's, that's in an update right now.
In fact, I, I can tell you that I was at the, this is EOC. I get, I get into the badge. I was there yesterday, and I would say we're running about 50% staff. We've got to rotate people out to get some rest. If you're not good for yourself, you're not good for anyone. And so we've been trying to get people to take a half a day off, a day off, and come in in teams where, like yesterday, I was there, Dub was not. Dub's there today, I'll be back there this afternoon. That's kind of the way we're doing it.
Okay. So moving on to item 1.2. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve a non-disclosure agreement for access to a vendor security packet from UKG for a possible timekeeping system. Ms. Soden.
Good morning. This is just so that our IT depart, or our IT director can have access to a vendor security packet to make sure that the security issues we want to have followed will be in place by that vendor. And I know the county attorney has approved and made suggested changes to the NDA prior to your signing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the proposed NDA with UKG for a timekeeping system with that as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. And for those of you that are watching on YouTube, and those of you in the courtroom that don't know Ms. Soden, she's our county treasurer. And so if there's any question about donations, she is our contact point. And you can, you can access her through the website or call here directly. So.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So we'll move on to your next issue, which is 1.3. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to authorize overtime pay instead of compensatory time earned for hours worked for all the non-exempt employees, and straight time pay for exempt employees for hours worked over 40 hours directly related to responding to the July 4 flooding disaster through the pay period ending July 26. Ms. Soden.
So this is just to make sure that everybody who has been working with this flood actually gets paid. We want them to get paid. That's obviously up to you. I would like them to get paid. And this will take us through the following pay period. And if it looks like we still need that, I'll come back to you at that time.
Okay. It might be good if you explained to the public the difference between exempt and non-exempt.
Exempt would be salaried employees, the upper level management employees. And then the non-exempt is not those employees.
Right.
The majority of our employees.
And, and electeds are exempt.
Yes. And, well, but electeds will not receive extra pay.
Right. I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the overtime pay rather than compensatory time and the worked over 40 hours proposal, suggestion as presented by Ms. Soden.
And my understanding is that if we tried to go through the compensatory time earned, they would not, that would not be reimbursable.
Correct.
And that's the reason we chose, we chose to go this direction.
It needs to be actual paid time in order for it to count towards any reimbursable grants.
Correct. Okay.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a 9:30 item. We're, we're pretty close. 1.4. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve and authorize county judge to rescind court orders 37764 dated 15 October 2019. This court order approved in agreement between Kerr County and RX Technologies for Managed Security Services. Corey Tennis.
Good morning, Court. Yes, we are Hill Country Strong. A tough fight never dies. So, yes, this contract signed almost six years ago now has kind of run its course. It is no longer in a useful state. So the RX Technologies does not necessarily fit the, the role that we're looking to, to utilize. So my next timed item will actually lend into what our way ahead is. So.
Why don't we call both of them together, so you can explain that?
Okay.
Hold on.
Okay.
You want to call 1.6?
Okay.
1.6?
Anyway. No, no. 1.5. I'll call, let me call the other one. That way we can talk about both of them at the same time. 1.5. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve and authorize county judge to sign agreements with Weaver Technologies to provide IT managed services, which would center on advanced level engineering technologies and capabilities should the need arise. Service time is billed, paid, or in block hours to use at our discretion. Mr. Tennis.
So on the, with the RX contract, we were billed on a monthly basis. No real set usage of hours, anything like that. The major projects that we have had here in the last year or two prior to me coming, most of those projects also built in labor and support follow-on. So that's why the current agreement with RX Technologies is really no longer suited towards Kerr County. Weaver Technologies, which is actually based in Fredericksburg, also has a lot more experience and technical knowledge with a lot of our internal equipment. And this contract with them, once we get the final Ts and Is done, we will actually be setting up in block hours, meaning we, we front pay for 20 hours, for example, and then we use those at our discretion should we need advanced engineering, advanced knowledge. So it's, it's used on an as-needed basis. And it's much more efficient, and it's much more cost-effective for the county as well.
I, I like what you're talking about doing, but how are you ever going to budget it like that?
Let, let me weigh in here.
Sure.
He's talked to me about this. What we're really trying to do is provide whatever required notice is to go ahead and terminate the RX Technologies contract, which was done years ago, and authorize us to enter into a new contract with Weaver. Now, Weaver's, the way Weaver, I think, the way I understand it is they're going to build more like a, a law firm would, or a architect or engineer that we hire, they charge us according to the amount of time and effort that they put into the project, rather than monthly, the way we did with RX.
So my, my budget plan is to still kind of front-load for that. However, any projects that we do have coming on, again, it would be with the understanding that there would be some labor and support within that project itself. These extra block hours is, if, if something arises that we just don't have the technical knowledge in-house to stand for. So yes, I'll, I'll front-load my budget in case we need to, just kind of contingency type of stuff.
Just like we do all our consultants, professional services.
Yeah, it's just when you throw in the block terminology in there, it causes me to raise a few questions there.
So in order to have a motion and ask for a second, I'm going to make a motion that we provide the requisite notice to terminate the contract with RX Technologies and authorize Mr. Tennis to be able to enter into services, professional services contract with Weaver Tech, Weaver.
Your attorneys.
We need to do one at a time, don't we?
If you wanted to time, that would be very helpful. But I also have a question about the agreements with Weaver Technologies. Did you run those by Steve?
I have been working with Steve. I am waiting for a couple last little nuggets from Tammy at RX, or at, excuse me, at Weaver, before we actually get into that. But even still, the RX Technologies contract needs to terminate.
And so will the agreements, will the item that relates to entering into the agreements come back once that agreement is finalized, so the court has an opportunity to have a look at the agreement before they?
Yes, I will not, yes. I will make sure your office has.
So you want to terminate, you want to terminate on to 1.4, but you're not ready for 1.5 to be?
I was hoping we'd have a response back this morning. That did not happen. The, the RX termination, it still is a 60-day notification, so we'll still have coverage with them for the next.
Judge, I'll, I'll move, I'll move for approval for 1.4.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve terminating the contract, giving the requisite notice for termination of contract with RX Technologies as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. We're going to pass on 1.5, but we understand what it is.
Yes.
1.6. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to authorize Kerrville Independent School District to install a crosswalk on the Ranchero Road in front of Nimitz Elementary. Mr. Gore.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. This item has to do with not just a crosswalk, but a blink and light that will be activated by a push button that will cross Ranchero near Nimitz Elementary. This will be paid for by KIST and installed by J3.
I'll move for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the cross, to install a crosswalk at Ranchero Road in front of Nimitz Elementary as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. 1.7. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to go out for annual bids for delivered fuel. Ms. Hoffert.
Good morning. We are asking the court to give authorization for us to go out for our delivered fuels. This is what we do every year. Once we put out the bids, we will come back to the court to open the bids on September 8, 2025, and also award the bids in court at that time.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve putting out for annual bids for delivered fuel as presented. Any discussion?
Just thank you, Kelly, for everything Roden Bridge has been doing in this, this thing with the flood. I mean, you guys have been outstanding.
Yeah, the same thing with Cory and them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We can't, we can't get enough thanks out for everybody doing.
I know. I know. We always leave somebody out. But y'all are appreciated.
You're right.
Okay. Those in favor? Raise your hand. Unanimous.
I'm sorry.
I saw the sheriff waving his little hand back there. Yeah, okay, Larry, you appreciate you.
We still got Ms. Hoffert at the podium, so let me finish up with her, and then we can talk about this other thing. 1.8. Consider discuss and take appropriate action for Commissioner's Court approval to trade RBU 256, a 2023 Caterpillar 930M loader, for a 2025 Caterpillar 930 loader. Ms. Hoffert.
Now, this is a terrible time to be bringing something like this in, but we had bought that brand-new loader in 2023. And probably, I'll just read it. We purchased RBU 256 on 10/13 of 2023. It was a brand-new unit. We ran this loader for a few hours and started having issues with it on 10/17, so four, four days later. From 10/17 to 2023 to 5/14 2025, our loader has been in the shop on and off with Whole Caterpillar seven times. We contacted the county attorney over this issue and thought we, thinking we had a lemon. In the state of Texas, they do not have lemon laws on heavy equipment. Over the course of the seven shop visits over a period of one year and eight months, the total labor hours is 390 hours, and the total parts cost is $94,601.94. All of this has been under the warranty. This last time, we picked up the loader and got it back, it started to do the same thing and still was not fixed. At this point, we contacted Whole Cat and said we need a different unit. It's going to cost us some money, though. And needless to say, you know, our trust in this unit is zero. Through all of this stuff with the flood, it sits in a corner, and it's one of our newest loaders, because nobody trusts it. This purchase will be under Sourcewell Contract 011723-CAT. It's a 24% discount. Caterpillar is giving us $196,000 for the trade-in unit, RBU 256. The additional monies for this purchase is $38,735. And we do have the money. At this time, I asked the Commissioner's Court for their approval to allow the Roden Bridge Department to trade in RBU 256, a 2023 Caterpillar 930M loader, on a brand-new 2025 Caterpillar 930 loader, and pay the additional $38,735 for the new cat loader.
I'll move for approval to make the trade and buy the, the new 25 Caterpillar 930 loader.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, how soon can that happen?
Yeah. I think pretty soon. I think they've got a unit waiting. So I think we ought to be able to do that pretty soon.
The only question, the only question I have is what, what confidence do we have this is the same model, other than a couple of years newer?
Holt's a good company, but that's, you're going to have that, you know?
Yeah, anyway.
It's luck of the draw sometimes. We got to have something that works.
We believe it's something in the, in the fuel system, and they have pretty much checked everything and replaced the whole fuel system.
Well, most things Holt are questionable, but that's okay.
Yeah.
We won't go there. Not related. Any other discussion?
Unfortunately.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, bro.
We're actually a little ahead. I didn't, I didn't know how much time we were going to take this morning. So one thing I will tell you that I did have a chance to talk to the President. I did have, I did shake his hand. And I followed my wife's instructions. She said I was authorized to say two words, and two words only. Thank you. And he said, thank you, us. And he said, "Thank you, us." And I spoke to his wife, too, and told her how important it was for those girls who were going to come to town. Senator Cornyn was here on that first Saturday. Senator Cruz came a little bit later in the week. We had both of them. Our Congressman was there. Our state senator was there. Our state representative was there. This has been an all-hands-on-deck undertaking, just so you know. And I'm going to single out Commissioner Jones, because he's kind of my eyes and ears over there at the EOC, but I think the least hours that you've had on a day is maybe 10. They've been going 15 and more. And a lot of times, there's not anything for us to do other than to wait for the next thing that happens. That's the process. And I share that because it's break time. If anybody else wants to say, this, we've got some time right now, but.
I'll just throw out one item. I want to give credit to our District 53 Representative, Wes Riddell. He's been on the ground multiple times. He's shown up.
On stop.
Other people may have showed up for the presidential visit. Great, glad to have all of them, but somehow he didn't get invited to meet with the President, which I feel bad for him, but, but I got to acknowledge Wes Riddell's been there for us. He's been great.
And Senator Flores, too.
Yeah, Pete Flores has been there a lot, and Chip Roy. Those three, those three electeds have been at the EOC, or in Wes's case, he's been out working boots on the ground.
That's right. And Ken Paxton's been there, too, by the way.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
Yeah.
Let's take about a 10-minute break, come back at 10 o'clock.
Court will come back to order. I'm calling the court to order, but I don't have a quorum. Well, I got one more seated.
You're here. You got it, boss.
There you go.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is 1.9, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to open, read aloud, and receive bids for the Kirk County Request for Proposal for Dog and Cat Kindles for the new Kirk County Animal Services Facility, and refer the bids to appropriate personnel for evaluation and award recommendations. And this is... There you are. I was looking for you.
Stand back.
We only allow one commissioner to have a knife at a time?
Yes. I'm not very well trained in weapons.
Yeah.
Um, okay, folks. The first packet of bids for dog and cat kennels comes from Stone Mountain Pet Products. And the first bid, and I'll try to read these off so they make sense, is for $215,179.52. It's for the dog holding cages, specifically dog holding cages, $215,179.52. Again, that's from Stone Mountain Pet Products. For the dog quarantine and isolation cages, remember, they are separate, comes out to $59,646. Again, $59,646. For the cat holding cages, which are separate from dog and in the quarantine, comes out to $24,963. For your cat quarantine and isolation cages, comes out to $17,862. Again, that's for cat quarantine and isolation cages, $17,862. Second sheet I'm reading off from them, I'll make sure it's not a duplicate. And it is. They gave us three copies of that bid proposal. Again, that company was Stone Mountain Pet Products. Next bid comes from TriStar Medals of Boyd, Texas. Their bid... Total, first total, comes out to $322,673.
Repeat that?
Sorry, $322,673. No cents, $322,673. And that looks like they're trying to wrap everything together. They have additional pages, and I'm gonna read what those are comprised of. The dog holding cages. It includes the dog quarantine and isolation cages. The cat quarantine and isolation cages. The cat holding cages. So, yeah, they have it all wrapped up into that figure of $322,673. Okay, sorry, it's just worded a little bit differently than previous bid. And again, that is TriStar Vet with brochures. Got one look at it. Public. Third bid is from... Three copies of their bid. Gator Kennels out of Loveland, Colorado.
Slipping on my job.
No, no, I got it, I got it. Marine-proof. There's no crayons. I have the bid documents from them. Again, Gator Kennels. I've worked through the pages and documents, which has the certificate. It has some of their quote paperwork. And for dog holding cages, these are broke down separately again, unlike the previous one. Dog holding cages, their quote was $109,896. $109,896 for dog holding cages. Dog quarantine and isolation cages at $32,765.50. That's dog quarantine and isolation, $32,765.50. Cat holding cages at $22,800. $22,800, cat holding cages. Moving on to cat quarantine and isolation cages, $24,510. Gator Kennels. Okay, and then all the lines, Gator Kennels.
Well, I think this is...
Yeah, these are copies. I'll make sure that these are not different.
Yeah.
That was the original, and this should just be... Every single bid came in with three copies as provided.
Okay.
Just to make the public...
Okay, good deal.
All right. And this is VSM Medical. We have a fourth. Mr. Givens is happy to know, he actually did get bids in.
What was that one bid?
VSS Medical. They are from, I almost said Mountain Home, Arkansas. Wilmington, Delaware. Wilmington, Delaware, folks. VSS Medical. Their bids, um, broken up into different items again. First is the dog holding cages at $257,008.40. Never trust a whole number, right? The second item is the dog quarantine and isolation cages at $71,369.70. Next item for them is cat holding cages at $15,078. $15,078, cat holding cages. Last item for their bid is cat quarantine and isolation cages at $10,926. Again, that's VSS Medical out of Wilmington, Delaware. I thank them for their bids. Includes this.
Okay.
I move that we receive these bids.
Second?
Got a motion to second to receive the bids as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
And who are we turning these over to? You ready?
There's supposed to be a committee, isn't there?
Yeah.
Isn't a committee, but I'd like for him to hang on to them. The committee will meet. I know this is still important, to finish this, we have to have this before it can be operational. But with the rain, I think we have a little more time to wait before the committee meets.
Okay.
Like after next week. Thank you.
Should one copy go to the county clerk and record it?
Yes.
Yes.
Very smart. Thank you.
Let's leave it to the county clerk, and then we'll go to you.
That's what I recall. Normally, the process, they go to the county clerk. And they can be officially...
Okay.
Anyway.
Next item on the agenda is item 1.10. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to allow Kirk County properties located at 550 Earl Garrett and 600 Earl Garrett to be used as a central location to assist citizens suffering from the flooding disaster in storage. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, we've had a lot of requests, as y'all can imagine, and it's been expressed by several of the commissioners up here. But every church, every available space, airport, all of them, anything we can have for storage or for services to be provided, we're filling up as fast as we can get. And so, the county does have, I think it's the second floor available at 550 Earl Garrett, and we've got 600 Earl Garrett right next to it that's not, the judge informed us, not set up appropriately for...
It has to do with ADA compliance.
Right.
550 is finished out.
But...
But we just can't invite the public into something that doesn't... It's not ADA compliant.
Whenever this scene is over, we're not sure what we're gonna have. Tiedem's gonna work with us very closely to move all these resources out, probably to the next disaster, whatever we have to do there. But they've got a program, we're working real closely with them. We hope we don't end up with a lot of overage, but we have to have somewhere to put stuff if we do. And so, what I would like is permission to be able to use 600 Earl Garrett for that, and 550 possibly for some office setups at the time for...
For agencies and...
For agencies to meet.
Public services.
Right.
I believe Small Business Association is coming. They were looking for a space, they found space elsewhere, not at 550. But they are coming to help out.
Right.
I will say, at 600, I mean, you might talk with Shane and see if the AC works, because it may not. And depending on what gets stored there, you might need some AC function.
I talked to Tracy, and she's still in here? No, I talked to Tracy, and didn't you say it's environmentally controlled over there at 600?
Well, I assumed it was.
I wouldn't assume.
We'll just confirm.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we'll find out what we need, but from the court, I need permission to be able to use those buildings.
It's gonna be climate-controlled or hot, one or the other.
Right, there you go.
Yeah. It's average.
And along those lines, we're looking for different places. I mean, if somebody knows something we don't know of, as far as might work for storage or anything like that, or an open field or something for equipment or whatever, I mean, we'd file it away, and we're always looking for something. And y'all are eyes and ears out there, you know, we can't be everywhere.
So I'd like to make this in the form of a motion.
Of course.
Yeah. I'll move that the court authorize Commissioner Jones to utilize office space available at 550 Earl Garrett or storage space available at 600 Earl Garrett as she...
As available.
As available. Good work.
Got a motion to the second? Any discussion? No, we don't have a second yet. You hear the second?
I made a motion.
Okay, give me the second.
No, I made the motion.
Oh, well, I already made one, but go ahead.
Oh, did you?
But I'm still the second. That's okay.
Oh, okay.
Well, I didn't realize.
I thought I recalled saying I'm putting this in the form of a motion.
You did.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
After when it starts being used, you will need to get with me so I can make sure that all of the costs involved with that are included in the FEMA reimbursement.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thanks. Good catch.
And if we need an agreement with whatever entities might use 550 Earl Garrett, let me know, and I'll get that for you when we hit the button.
Okay.
And just to clarify, so the public knows, we have, the available space we have at 550 is committed for adult probation. This is just something that's temporary, to get us to...
Yeah, but if they wanted to damage some of that space, it might...
Any other discussion?
Help with some grant money.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item 1.11. Consider, discuss, and take update on matters related to the HCSRPC, the Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission. Mr. Paces.
Yep. Not a lot to report, but this is intended to be a regular item, and especially to allow discussion and input from the public. But we had a board meeting scheduled for Monday, July 7th, and it was canceled, as you can imagine. Kendall County, they were busy, we were busy, so... And it has not been rescheduled, so just kind of pay attention to the website. We'll try to get information out to interested parties whenever it gets rescheduled. Certainly have not received any kind of response to our various requests to coordinate from Public Utilities Commission or LCP. I was invited to speak at the Rotary Club this Wednesday to talk about battery energy storage system, and I'm gonna make every attempt to go ahead and do that. And then, well, the next agenda item can, will be self-explanatory, so...
So that was really the...
That's all I've got.
Catch-up report.
Yeah, that's all I've got.
Okay.
So we'll move on to the...
Any questions or discussions, the only question? Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Moving on to item 1.12. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on a request from Gillespie County to join the Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission.
And this is an item, we have received a formal request in the form of a letter, including a couple resolutions from Gillespie County Judge, Judge Daniel?
Jones.
I'm sorry. Daniel Jones. That's why I was confused.
It was close.
Yeah, I got the first name. Come on. Anyway, and of course, they can't be here because they have Commissioner's Court at the same time on Mondays, just as we do. But in discussing it with them, and I'm not sure which two, if we agree to allow them to join the commission, who they will nominate, but I know that Judge Jones and Commissioner Cromer have been involved. They have met with Commissioner Holt and myself one or two times, and I think they have a keen interest. They have the same problem with battery energy storage systems. In fact, the one at Harper is probably further along than anywhere else. And I think there is strength in numbers or area in this case, and I would recommend that this court consider, including Gillespie County, in our Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission.
So the motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that this court approve the Gillespie County joining the Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission.
Second. Got a motion and a second?
And of course, we, they have already agreed, they're not gonna try to modify our ILA or our bylaws. They understand that other than the names changing and...
I talked to Judge Jones.
Yeah.
He just wants to accept what we have.
Yes. And so, I think it's an easy fix for the county attorney to modify those few documents a little bit to...
Any thoughts?
Okay, anyway.
Counsel to do that, not necessarily our county attorney.
I think it probably needs to be in the form of an addendum rather than a new contract.
Well, whatever, but it should be easy. They don't want to change anything other than where it's appropriate for their inclusion.
There's some discussion opportunity?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
Just for the public to understand, this northern loop that comes from the Mountain Home substation goes right up to this Harper substation, and then it goes all the way and ends off in Comfort. That's the reason we think it is important. As electricity flows, it are two loops. One comes from Bandera up to Comfort, and this is the northern loop. So that's why we believe it's important to have Gillespie, because we are tied to that electricity whether we like it or not.
I felt like they should have been part of it from the beginning.
Right.
And that's the reason I...
And look, I'll say, this is all subject to Kendall County. They would have to approve all this as well. I believe they will, but...
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. opposed? Unanimous. Moving on to 1.13. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding whether the designated officer, the tax collector, should calculate the voter approval rate for Kirk County lateral roads in the Lake Endrum Estates Road District taxing entities in the matter as noted in 26.042 of the Texas Property Tax Code. This is due to the entities being located in an area declared a disaster area by the governor or by the President of the United States. Mr. Reeves.
Good morning, gentlemen. I know the last thing anybody, including myself, wants to talk about is property taxes at this time, but after the events of July 4th, Section 26.042 A and G of the Texas Property Code allows for a taxing entity such as the ones listed in the agenda to calculate its voter approval tax rate as a special taxing unit. This would allow the individual who calculates the tax rate, being myself, and the voter approval rate for maintenance and operations to calculate the rate using 8% rather than 3.5% over the non-new revenue rate. The difference is not to pad a budget or anything like that, it's for the unforeseen costs that have arisen out of the disaster. I can only calculate that if I get your approval. That doesn't mean the tax rate will go up that much. That's gonna be left to the five of you as the budget process rolls around. Before you, you have a copy of the proposed court order, which was developed by our outside counsel who represents us in property tax matters, and it has been sent to Ms. Stebbins, who has reviewed and approved the wording. I'm open for discussion. This doesn't mean we're raising taxes, but I can only calculate it using this disaster rate, if authorized by the court, and I will begin the calculations regardless which way you tell me to go before the next Commissioner's Court meeting. That's why I'm before you today.
I'm gonna go ahead and take the initiative and make a motion to approve you to do that. You and Ms. Sheldon and I have sat down and talked about this. Our whole budget period is being eroded away.
Literally.
And the sooner, we gotta have somebody that's on top of this, and you're the best person to do it, Bob, so...
Second.
My motion is for you to do it. Second. Any discussion? One thing I wanted to clarify about it, and I'm just talking about the takeaway that I had when the three of us met. The reason that it's 8% instead of the usual 3.5%, which is, and if you do, if you raise it more than 3.5%, you gotta get voter approval.
That's correct.
Okay? They raise it when you have disasters like this. And it's more cash flow management. We're gonna have to pay for this stuff, and a lot of this is gonna be reimbursed by FEMA. And for those of you who, I don't mean, FEMA's, they're here, I'm thankful they're here, but they're slow. And the last time we had a big FEMA project, it took us, what, three years? At least two, if not three years, before we got reimbursed. And so, with that, we have to be able to at least pay the contractors now and then get reimbursed later, so...
That's amazing, they're telling me how fast they're moving.
Well, I hope they do.
No, I believe you. I know, I know, I'm just saying, that's...
When we did some roads, we had a harder time.
Yeah.
But we need to have somebody on top of it, and you're the best person for the county to do this, Bob, in my opinion.
Does your motion include that you can sign it, Judge?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I've got, they tell me to sign all kinds of things these days.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Moving on to item 1.14. It's discussion regarding your proposed department requested budgets and tax rate. Okay, what this is, is Tanja and I are working on a recommended budget, and we postponed some things that we were gonna do today, including that afternoon workshop, because we haven't been able to do it. And so, what I wanted to do was to reach out to you commissioners with the departments that, and offices that you oversee as part of your liaison responsibility, to go back to the big fat white notebook that we have, and look at your departments and see what kind of recommendations you can make to us to kind of short-circuit this thing so we know where the department is and where you are as a commissioner on this court with regard to the people that you liaise with. And so, and I just do, for example, animal services would be Commissioner Holt, human resources and indigent services would be Commissioner Holt, information technology is Commissioner Holt, sorry. Moving on to OSSF and environmental would be Commissioner Paces. Road bridge would be Commissioner Harris. 550 and 600 Earl Garrett would be Paces. Hill Country Youth Event Center would be Harris, and volunteer fire department would be Paces. And anything you can do to weigh in and help them, I would appreciate it. What I'm asking you to do is take a look at who you oversee, and with regard to the sheriff's office, I'm working with that, I'm working with them directly, but make recommendations back to us, and that would be helpful rather than us trying to figure out what to do with the people that you work with.
Right.
That's just a request.
And the sheriff's department has already worked up some stuff.
Oh, we're working.
Yeah.
We got all kinds of stuff.
Right.
Okay, so that was more informational. 1.15 is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to appoint Lisa Walter as the Kirk County Web Accessibility Coordinator. And that is a, actually, kind of an expanded job description, because that's one of the things that she's doing for us.
Is she doing that already?
She is, yes, she is.
But it's not in her job description, and so we put it on the agenda so she's authorized to do it.
Right. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Walter as the Kirk County Web Accessibility Coordinator as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.16. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to surplus two bench chairs from the district judges' courtrooms. Ms. Sheldon.
Yes, there are two bench chairs that need surplusing.
I move for approval.
Okay, I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the chairs as surplus as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, you don't need to go anywhere. We'll move on to the approval agenda. Item 2.1, our budget amendments.
Yes, you have nine budget adjustments in front of you. Most of these are line item transfers between the same department or the same department head. There is one where we're using insurance proceeds.
Bid what?
The insurance proceeds came in, and so we're adding the amount of the proceeds to the expense so that that amount can be expended.
Right.
I move for approval.
I second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment as presented. Any discussion? Favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.2, pay bills.
Yes, invoices for your consideration today, $2,946,445.40.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.3, late bills.
There are not any.
2.4, auditor reports.
There are not any.
Thank you. Item 2.5, monthly reports.
Yes, for June 2025, District Clerk's Office, District Clerk Dawn Lance, Environmental Health, OSSF, Director Ashley Batters, County Clerk's Office, County Clerk Nadine Alford, County Auditor's Office, County Auditor Tanya Shelton, Constable, Constable Tommy Rodriguez, Precinct 1, Constable Kyle Snyder, Precinct 2, Constable Paul Gonzalez, Precinct 3, Constable Brad Ryder, Precinct 4, Justice of the Peace, Judge Missy French, Precinct 1, Judge J.R. Horn, Precinct 2, Judge Kathy Mitchell, Precinct 4. I move for approval.
Got a second?
Yes, second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the monthly reports as presented. Any discussion?
Yeah. On four? You had who?
On what? I didn't have.
Yeah, you said, you said, yeah, she should have been three. I thought he said four.
I don't, I didn't catch that.
Did I?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I was thinking where we were.
That's why I was stopping.
We know what number she is.
Right, I just want to make sure it's correct on the record.
I just misread it. I was thinking about four.
Yeah, I just want it correct on the record.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. We're with you. Okay.
Yeah.
With that, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Move on to item 2.6, which are court orders. I reviewed court orders from June the 23 of this year and also July 7. The June 23s are numbered 41332 through 41366. That's 34 orders. They all seem to be in order to me, and on the July 7, we just have two, which are 41367 and 41368. And I recommend approval of these orders.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay, with that, we move on to the information agenda. 3.1, our status reports from department heads. A I.T., who has been very busy over at the Youth Event Center.
Yes, sir. So in light of all of the activity at the Ag Barn and everything else throughout the county, our, our Office 365 migration was supposed to happen next Monday. I'm actually going to push that back a week. So after having spent last week watching the battle rhythm slowly normalize, especially over the weekend, how it kind of flattened out, I don't want to jump on anybody's toes this next week or these next two weeks. So we're going to push it back one week to really kind of let everything kind of normalize out, make sure that that battle rhythm is, is running as smoothly as possible before we do make this migration. Now, I know a question might come up, why only a week? It's because the equipment that we're utilizing is dying quickly. So we need to make this migration happen. I believe we have the ability to extend it one more week, but we need to push it back. So more informational than, than anything else, but in light of everything that's happened, we're gonna put, put a pause on it for an extra week.
And let me just say, for those of you that have not heard the term battle rhythm, I hadn't heard probably in 40 years or so since I was discharged from the Army, but that's what's going on over there. It's a battle rhythm, and they're moving and shaking.
Yes, sir. We've got it normalized from, from the I.T. side of it. Everything's kind of flattened out. I haven't made it over there yet this morning, but I do intend to go just walk through and make sure that everybody's, everything's still operated as.
And because we haven't been able to talk, you're his liaison. I've made some requests of him that he'll need to transfer over to you. I'm preparing, I know, I cheated. I know. But, but, but we need, that is our, that's our center there, and there's some upgrading that needs to be done.
I would agree.
Other than what he's laid out?
Do what?
First of all, the two of you can tap out when you need to part of it.
Right, right.
Both of you can tell him anything you want, and he can tell the other.
Right.
That's the way, that's the way you work the open meetings.
But I've been working through him, and so he should be getting stuff to you.
He'll back with me, huh?
I know, and I, I assume as we scale down the larger EOC into something just more permanent and manageable over there, that doesn't encumber our large spaces, which we may need to get back eventually, that that will be your priority is to make that work, especially with some of the folks that we have here to assist you.
Yeah, the initial way back was a bit of a challenge, especially with all the different vendors coming in, but that's subsided dramatically, and we're full steam ahead, and we're operating, so.
Yes, and Commissioner Harris and I looked at a suitable facility, but they're going to have to decide where that's going to be for the permanent in the future.
Which is why I'm staying out of that. That's where I was, I was working, yeah.
I figured. Thank you.
But I wasn't trying to step on your toes. I just wanted you to know. Talk to him.
These are unusual times.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next item is 3.2, status reports from elected officials. Got a couple of elected officials.
Yeah, first, just what I've been saying. When you ask Cory, excuse me, Judge?
You get any sleep?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, a little bit. But Cory has been amazing. I sat across from him for the first week. I mean, what he had to work with was amazing. I mean, I think that Ag Barn's tapped out, and I'll tell you what. There were some tempers probably flew in between the time, between me and him, but just, you know, everybody's kind of tired and short tempered, but they've done a great job. They've had somebody out there the whole time. You know, like I said, across from a week, I've sent him to the office to prepare for some hearings I'll probably be having to go to in the near future. But what I want to make the court aware of is, I told you all we had 2,200 assets, and we do. We have everything, everything and anything we need right now. My fear, I just want to make the court aware, like plant that seed, Commissioner Holt, is, is it in the fut, they will leave at some time, whether it be two months to six months. You know, this will all lie on Kirk County, a majority of it, to, to take from there and move on and get some closure, do some different things. So I wanted to make you aware, I mean, we're pretty much stretched out. An example, you know, we're in the budget process. I truly don't know what all I need. Example is, you know, there's a lot of found property out there. We're kind of trying to work through that. We're going to work through the county attorney's office. You know, we do already have people bringing to our office. We do not have the facilities for that. I have contacted EOC and requested four 40-foot climate-controlled storage units. It's a very slow process, but you know, I'm hoping I can get some. We'll put it in our office, but you know, the property that is brought, you know, we'll have to hold and deal with that, work it out. But you know, as far as us and my investigators, I see them tapped out, I mean, for the next year. I mean, there's a lot of stuff I don't want to get discussion. I will work with the court. I'll probably be asking for executive session next time to go into some more detail. But you know, just please consider, we still have our normal day-to-day operations in the run to take care of this county. I mean, everybody I've had has been out. We are starting to get some days off, but we're tapped out. Just kind of make y'all aware. Thank you.
Any other elections? Okay. 3.3, status reports from liaison commissioners.
We've done a lot of this reporting already, so is there anything to add?
Yeah, I didn't get to meet with headwaters this week.
Add that we had.
But just part of that is, we're having to cross bounds with, because of the operation center into areas that I normally would not be, like with Cory on stuff. And so we do need to get all that straightened up to where I can start communicating back with, with his liaison and those folks to get that back in order.
Just going to say that we had scheduled a aggregate production operations advisory council meeting. I think it was originally scheduled for next Tuesday evening. It's been canceled. I'll get back to the folks that normally participate in those sometime.
From an airport perspective, I did fly out of there on a recce flight to see devastation, marked debris, and then report that up. But my discussions with Joe Kennedy, who runs our FBO, is to capture costs, because right now, that airport is the primary hub for helicopter and fixed-wing aviation. It's as busy as it's ever been. I'm grateful to have it. But you know, right now, no one's paying except for fuel, or airport ramp fees, stuff like that. So I've asked that Joe be involved and make sure that they capture costs for reimbursement later for a lot of those aircraft operating out of there. Grateful to have it. It's been clutch. It's certainly better than trying to land in a field. Thank you.
All I'll say is, our event center has been fantastic. The way it's laid out, with a field next to it for the helicopters to land, I mean, all in one campus has been amazing. And it's busy. You ever stomped on a red at bed, that's what it looks like at times. But it's been busy, and everybody's worked together out there. Jake and his staff are amazing. We did have to pull in. Housekeeping come in and help. The first Sunday, I had my wife out there helping clean bathrooms, you know, just to keep up with things. But, but the housekeeping crews come and help. Can you imagine with however many people were out there, how overwhelmed Jake's three-man staff was? So that's all I got.
We've all talked about how appreciative we are to what help that we've got. And I don't want to douse any water on that, but I need to tell you what our biggest problem is. And the biggest problem we're having are our unsupervised volunteers, or freelance volunteers, as Dalton Rice calls them. And they come, they're wonderful people, great hearts, doing, doing, doing God's work. But we don't know where they are. We don't know what they're doing. And yesterday, when we had to shut down operations in, in the river basin, which I got called and said, asked me to do it, and I did it on the spot. But we don't know where they are. We don't know how to get notice to them. And so the plea is, for all unsupervised volunteers, to please check in with Tidham, go to websites. You can go to Kirk Together. You can go to our website. You can go to Tidham's website. There's all kinds of resources to do this. But we need them to be accounted for so we know who they are and where they're working. And how, and so if something happens, they'll be accounted for. We don't know where they are. And, and as a footnote, you hear about the number of lives lost, and it's horrific. Keeps me awake at night. But, and you hear about the missing. And I try to explain to people, if they were at the camps, they're accounted for, one way or the other. We've got, we've got that accounting. If they live here, people are letting us know what's going on, and they're accounted for. It's the tourists that came in for the fourth weekend, the concert, the fireworks. We don't know how many came. We don't know where they are. We don't know how many we've lost. We've heard accounts of trailer after trailer after trailer being swept into the river with families in them. Can't find the trailers. We've got a sonar crew coming in. We've got dive crews in the river. We've got a sonar crew coming out. That's why we, it's what we don't know. We don't know how many of them there are. And so don't, don't be discouraged when you hear that number. We're doing the very best we can. But it is an unknown at this point.
Yeah, and to add to what you're saying, Judge, you know, a lot of y'all have seen that F-250 on its side, and all you can see is a tire and a door. Just a little more gravel, it wouldn't even have been seen. And so who knows how many is out there completely covered that we're going to get to. There are plans to drain both limits in Ingram Lake. I don't know which order it's going to happen, but that's in the works. That's in the works to see what's there is. Like Ann Carr said earlier, you know, she had a little bit different reason, but the reason we're going to do it right off the bat is for recovery, see what's under there.
Keep lines parking included in that.
An incident that reported to me, they found a trailer that's completely covered up with gravel and dirt, that gravel, in the river, 27 feet below the surface of the water. So we don't know what's down there. And we've searched it all the way to Canyon Lake, just so you know, all the way. Okay, with that, we're going to take a brief recess, and the court's going to convene in executive session to discuss some, some other matters. So with that, we adjourn for five minutes.
No action to be taken, so court is turned.